Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you here today, everyone and all, to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, June twenty seventh of two thousand and twenty-three. With me here today, Don Swanger, Nick Wiegel, myself, Mike Steinis, are your county supervisors. I have Lisa, our county auditor, is here, and the auditor here from IT, Luann, our executive assistant, is in the background. And first on our admirers here from the press. And first on our agenda today is Mr. Jayden Shekel, our Assistant Jackson County Engineer. Good morning.
Good morning. A short agenda today. The only thing that's on here is a right-of-way utility permit for Andrew Telephone Company. That's for one of our bridge projects that's coming up for this fall, existing fiber, it's right underneath the existing bridge or into the road, so. For us to put the bridge there, fiber's got to be moved, so they're relocating it right along the right-of-way out there to be out of the way, so. In the Perry Township, Section twenty-one, two hundred and forty-second, so. Pretty straightforward, I guess, I'll let you get any.
It's like four of them.
Montel, Andrew, yeah, they must.
Are they the second?
Yeah. So recommending approval for the right-of-way ability permit.
Second, a motion to second to approve the right-of-way permit to Lamont Telephone Company, the Perry Section twenty-one, as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
That's all I have. I can give you an update on Y sixty-one overlay.
Yeah, would you?
Uh, so asphalt's all done. Yesterday and today, they are out there doing the cable guard rail, the bottom of the hill that you're probably familiar with. And then later this week should be pavement markings, and that'll be it. So we're on the down this slide.
There was a few comments that the markings they had on this last overlay was, the wings were exactly equal, they're gonna equal that out.
That might have been sixty-two. Why is, we don't have pavement mark, we have, uh, traffic control scientist has no pavement markings. So that might have been sixty-two because he had those.
Yeah, that is sixty-two.
Yeah, and so they're gonna show that them won't be.
I've heard nothing but good things. Actually had a couple of calls and appreciate what we've done and what we can do and.
Going holes that probably.
Why we do it all, yeah. There's this little money factor involved in that, but anyway, appreciate it. Thanks, Jayden.
Yep.
Okay, are there any visitors or citizens that are present that would like to address the board today? You're seeing none? Um. Lisa?
I have a lot today.
Okay.
I think I better. Yield away.
Did I get your agenda?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, 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 this book.
Yes, I have a lot to them.
Okay, Luann?
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, calendar for this week. Eleven o'clock this morning, we have a work session on a wind energy ordinance. Um, I did not print out all of those ordinances, but if you want them printed out, just let me know. Um, then at eleven thirty, um, or whenever we're done with that work session, um, you can cross the street to go over to Innovate One-twenty's, um, to meet their UX Design internship students. And then, um, come to it for this afternoon is the Women Lynn and Legacy, um, event in Monticello for Dawn, if you're going to that. Wednesday, June twenty-eighth at nine AM is an IRIS meeting, um, interview advisor for NIN. Thursday, June twenty-ninth at nine AM is the Senator Grassley, um, event at ECIA interview for any of you. And then Friday, June thirtieth, we will have another meeting that morning, the one that's rescheduled for the Fourth of July. That'll be at ten AM. And then, um, it'll be as sure, as short a meeting as we can make it on Friday. Um, and also at noon, remember that the Jackson County Treasurers Office will be closing early, as they always do on June thirtieth, to finish their fiscal year-end business.
So on Wednesday, also, there is a clean energy presentation. Did you get that email from?
Ben?
I don't remember. Did it come from Ben?
The Jackson County, um, Energy District.
Yeah, I don't know if it was them that was putting it on, there's at the offshore.
Yeah.
At four o'clock. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's right, that's right. Um, the courthouse will be open on Monday, July third, and then it'll be closed again for the Fourth of July holiday on the fourth.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, today for business, um, we have to do some appointment for the Veterans Affairs Commission. And the first thing I'm looking to do is for a motion to accept with regrets the resignation of Roger Schnorr from the Veterans Affairs Commission after seven years.
So move ahead, yes, and a lot of appreciation.
Second, sorry.
I have a motion in a second to approve the resignation with regrets to Roger Schnorr from the Veterans Affairs Commission. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
And I believe you have in your packets the application from Laura Akers, um, to be appointed to deposition on the Veterans Affairs Commission, uh, for a term to expire June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-sixth.
Uh, reading this over, it says appears that Laura is well qualified for that position. Has a lot of background.
So move.
Okay.
Motion second to approve Laura Akers to the Veterans Affairs Commission as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
And with those two changes, the Veterans Affairs Commission will be gender balanced for the first time, I think, ever. To make the governor happy.
Well, we try.
Right.
Not always, always the case, but, you know.
Right.
Well, if you get somebody to volunteer, it's hard to pick and choose.
Right. Also, today I have, um, applications for three fireworks permits, uh, one from Brent Moore, um, on one hundred ninety-fifth Street in Bellevue for July the third, and I have already sent out word of that to like the Bellevue Fire Department and the Sheriff's Department, because it's very short notice for them if we pass it today, and it's actually this coming up weekend, so I'm looking for approval on that fireworks permit.
I know we got rain over the weekend, but is that enough? Because I know there was talk of possibility of a bird man because it was so dry.
I talked to a couple of department heads or fire departments, and they said it was possible, but they thought with the rain that we got that hopefully there's some work coming here Thursday, but. I don't look for, I guess, I don't know until they call it. I want people to be aware that if they call it, that's, of course, you cannot shoot fireworks.
Right, right. And that's on every memo and every permit that goes out that if you're in doubt, call dispatch and ask them if it's okay.
Right.
Also, um, I have an application for a fireworks permit for Larry Davis on one hundredth Street in Macokona, um, for July twenty-second.
Are you doing these as one motion for all three? Permits?
Okay with me, but if you want them separate, we'll do them separate. Okay? Let's do the first one.
I'll make a motion to approve Moore's.
Motion second to approve Grant Moore's, uh, fireworks permit application as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
A motion for Larry Davis.
Second thought.
Motion a second to approve the fireworks permit for Mr. Larry Davis at one hundredth Street, one four six zero nine. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
Let me jump the gun, I'm sorry.
You made a motion for the Great River Thrashers in Miles.
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second to approve the fireworks permit for the Great River Thrashers, uh, in Miles on seven fourteen of twenty-three, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
That's all the business I have for you today.
Thank you. And Beth, are you available?
I am.
Good morning.
Good morning. I don't know if that you guys got this resolution, because Sharon just gave it to me after today. You have it here, I think it's in your package. Number nine seven three.
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four.
Is it in with yours, Lisa, or just separate?
Um, I think it should be where in the last.
First one, this one, two twenty-five.
Yes, it's new heritage, George, written, um, the actual amendment is a, is a full sheet, but yes, you have an eight and a half by eleven.
Nine seventy-four.
Seven seventy-four.
It'll be the first page.
Yeah.
Fair enough. So this is, um, um, mobile home tax abatement request for Alan Goodnow. He had a nineteen seventy-six art craft, uh, mobile home that was parked in the Sprigville Mobile Home Park. Um, Hemley's Trailer Court is what it used to be called. It's owned by Travis Kiefer now. And Alan did move that mobile home out of the park in December of two thousand and twenty-one. He did not notify us of that. We continue to charge some mobile home taxes. Um, and now he has notified us of it. Um, he did owe some taxes, so we weren't able to ask for the abatement request until he paid those. He came in and paid them, um, uh, through December of twenty-one, or asking for abatement for the second half of, um, March of twenty-two through present. And that total is.
Two hundred and twenty-five?
Twenty-five, there it is, yeah, two hundred and twenty-five dollars for taxes. Tell me. He did come in, bring his title and get a junking certificate, so that's awesome.
So everything cleared on.
Everything's cleared out, but we just have to.
Just get rid of all the paperwork.
Yeah, it did go to taxes, turned into a county held though, because those don't usually get purchased, so we just, you guys can abate them.
Morning.
Perfect.
Motion second to approve Resolution nine, was, was turned over, Resolution nine seven four, we do a little preaching here, dash zero six, dash two seven, dash twenty twenty-three. As presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay? And carry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, Beth, would you know, I'll have to go into the second paper. I'll show her to put it on the paper. Okay, thank you.
So I guess, Lisa, would you want to start, or do you want to wait, or?
No, that's fine. But today is the end of the fiscal year, getting close to the end of the fiscal year, so we do have all of those resolutions that need to be passed. So it's this morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three board proceedings, as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion second to approve the minutes for the June twentieth, twenty-three board proceedings as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
Um, I also need a motion to approve a cigarette permit to SNK Gas and Food, uh, called the Outta Creek Shop at eighteen eight twenty, uh, Bellevue Cascade Road in Zwingel, effective July first, two thousand and twenty-three through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. I'll make that motion.
Second, motion second to approve a cigarette permit to SNK Gas and Food, Outta Creek, as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
I need a motion to approve the renewal of a Class C retail alcohol license with outdoor service to Bluff Lake at ninety-three oh one ninety-fifth Avenue of Macokona, effective July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three through July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and yes, it's not on your agenda.
I make that motion.
I have a motion in a second to approve the.
Clicker license, a renewal of a Class C retail alcohol license to Bluff Lake.
As presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
Now, this comes for all of the year-end resolutions and such. Do you want me to continue, or do you want?
We can, we can stop and restart if that's.
Okay.
Whatever you'd like, I tell you.
That's fine, I mean.
If you want to keep going, we surely can too.
It's up to you. I mean, we, we can bust through this, it's.
Yeah, that's fine. Let's finish.
Thank you. Okay. So I need a motion needed to approve the chair signature on the FY two thousand and twenty-four contracts between Jackson County Board of Supervisors and the four public libraries in the cities of Bellevue, Macokona, Preston, and Sebelah, with the county agreeing to provide the library's financial support of one hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars.
And that was digging up per the budget when you approved it.
Correct. That's perfect.
I'll second that.
Motion second to approve, uh, approve the chair signature on the fiscal year of twenty-four contracts with the Jackson County, uh, public libraries as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve Resolution number nine sixty-five dash zero six dash twenty-seven dash twenty twenty-three for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four appropriations by department.
And. There was a brief explanation as appropriations by department, just the budget.
It just means that as soon as the budget is set, that what this resolution does is it appropriates all of that money back to the departments to spend.
I'll second that.
Motion second to approve Resolution nine six five dash zero six dash two seven dash twenty twenty-three as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
Just as a side note, some counties do not, even though the budget's been approved at a hundred percent, the appropriations, um, by department, they only give them seventy-five percent or whatever that percentage is, so. That resolution that you just passed gives a hundred percent back to the departments. So that's what that means.
Okay.
Motion needed to approve Resolution number nine sixty-six dash zero six dash twenty-seven dash twenty twenty-three, naming county officers' bank depositories for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, for the recorder and sheriff designated banks to deposit revenues held in their trust accounts.
So move.
Second, motion second to approve Resolution nine six six dash zero six dash two seven dash twenty twenty-three, as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve Resolution number nine sixty-seven dash zero six dash twenty-seven dash twenty twenty-three, naming Jackson County Bank Depositories for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, the financial institutions to be depositories for funds collected in the County Treasurers Office.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve Resolution nine six seven dash zero six, dash two seven dash twenty twenty-three as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve Resolution number nine sixty-eight dash zero six dash twenty-seven dash twenty twenty-three for designation of County Bank for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, designating Macokona State Bank for county warrants and payroll warrants.
Second.
Motion second to approve Resolution nine sixty-eight dash zero six dash two seven dash twenty twenty-three as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign? Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve Resolution number nine sixty-nine dash zero six dash twenty-seven dash twenty twenty-three for issuing county warrants and allowing the auditor to issue warrants without the prior approval of the board for payment on freight, postage, express, payrolls, water, lights, telephone, contractual services, witness fees, school of instruction registration fees, and mileage.
Is there anything new in there?
No.
Nope?
Everything's staying the same.
Second thought.
Motion second to approve, to approve Resolution nine six nine dash zero six dash two seven dash twenty twenty-three as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve Resolution number nine seventy dash zero six dash twenty-seven dash twenty twenty-three for interfund operating transfers, authorizing the auditor to periodically transfer sounds from the general basic and rural services basic funds to the secondary roads funds during twenty-three, twenty-four budget year.
So move.
Okay.
Motion second to approve Resolution nine seventy dash zero six dash twenty-seven dash twenty twenty-three. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
You, as the board of supervisors, do set the salaries for the township clerks and trustees, so I do need a motion to approve Resolution number nine seventy-one dash zero six dash twenty-seven dash twenty twenty-three for township officials reimbursement with a compensation rate of twenty-five dollars per meeting and for clerk's bookwork of twenty-five dollars per month, not to exceed three hundred dollars per year.
Has that changed?
No.
Clear.
Motion to approve Resolution nine seventy-one dash zero six dash two seven dash twenty twenty-three. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve Resolution number nine seventy-two dash zero six dash twenty-seven dash twenty twenty-three for payroll for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
Just out of curiosity, you have neither myself both in District Three. Does that matter, or does that need to be corrected? Some, one of them should be District Two. That you.
What resolution are you numbering?
I was like, what are you?
What resolution?
Payroll, the one you just did. I'm just on there in District Three, she should be District Two.
Becky did that, so we'll have to correct that.
Okay. I threw that as correct, her motion as correct.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution nine seven two dash zero six dash two seven dash twenty twenty-three as amended. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
And again, you, as board supervisors, you do set the pay for the election workers and all of that pay that goes for that. That was one of the technical infractions that happened in the state of Iowa, so every year I want to make sure that we, um, set the pay for our election committee. So I need a motion to approve Resolution number nine seventy-three dash zero six dash twenty-seven dash twenty twenty-three, setting the compensation of all the election board members and other temporary election officials and hours and the mileage rates.
So move.
Second.
Motion second to approve Resolution nine seventy-three dash zero six dash twenty-seven dash twenty twenty-three as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
That's all I have for the board today. Thank you.
Okay, we will come back to the other one if so needed. All right, so, um. I see Nathan's here, and Brianna's here. Nathan, do you want to come forward?
Sure.
Good morning.
Morning.
We're joined by Nathan Jones, our Jackson County Conservation Director.
How are you guys doing?
Good.
Good. Quick update on some stuff. Nathan came to our last meeting. We met at our caty wildlife area over by, I'd say Sebelah, I guess, between Miles and Sebelah. Not a lot of new information in that meeting. It was more just kind of showing the area, updating what's going on, so for you guys' updates.
I got a question about that. Did, I know, I don't know how long it's been already, but we approved the dike and, and all that. Is that all completed?
Yep, the pond is built. It's not filling real fast.
No.
The drought.
No, I don't know that it would fill real fast.
It's probably about twelve foot deep, twelve to fifteen, pretty deep right now, so it's got plenty of water, it's stocked with fish. Um, so we're, we're just waiting on moisture.
Yeah, to kind of fill that one cave, so, um, that's one that in the past, our board, we're just kind of wanting to make sure it will fill, fill and hold before we do any
updates to the parking or road to get to it for access, that pond. Um, and that'll be great opportunities, hopefully, to try to pay some of that, so, um, but yes, that pond's done, um. Within that area, our next step is we have a grant through the Practical Farmers of Iowa. Um, we're going to see forty acres down that's currently in grown to a pollinator seeding, um, so they're going to pay with that grant. They're, they, we're going to get about eighteen thousand dollars money for several areas due to some habitat for pollinators in Jackson County. Um, but the grant and overall, we're working with six counties and several hundred thousand dollars to Eastern Iowa. Most of it's going to private landowners. So if people need something, they can reach out to me and I can give them a touch and we might go on a project forum.
Do you, uh, go publicly with either an ad or a radio?
Well, I think the Fish and Wildlife Service is going to take on the lead of handing out the funds, will probably kind of associate. But if, if you guys talk to somebody and they looking for something, they can come to me and I can try to get them.
Sure.
Um, funding through that, so, um, that's, that's kind of a, the main thing that's going on there. If there is one more pond on that area, we have the dike cut on it right now, trying to dry it out, in hopes that we can get a fish hack tack grant on that and redo that pond, so we have the two ponds that you utilized. Um, our, uh, walk on there pre-meeting, didn't get down to see that pond, but, um, we, it was hot enough that I don't think anybody wanted to walk any further than we did. So, um, yeah, that, that area is coming along and it, it is going to get utilized by the public once that pond is full.
That'll be nice, so.
Um.
Nice small area.
Yeah, um. Kind of heads up for you guys, I'm sure you're going to get calls. Campgrounds are totally open now. Um, Sebelah's got like six sites left open for the weekend as of last night. Bruce has about twelve sites left open as of this morning. So they'll probably fall in the next day or two, I'm sure. Um, I guess I can't guarantee that, but, um, so the campgrounds are definitely, they've been a lot of our staff's work the last month, frankly, you know. And, you know, and I, I wouldn't say they're perfect by any means, but the campers seem, they don't seem to care, so.
Well, we sure appreciate, I mean, I hope you relay it to your staff that we appreciate what the work they've done. We know it's not clean work, it is, it's not the best scenario, but, uh, we appreciate, you know. We can't stop the flood, but we sure.
Yeah, now it's the paperwork and hopefully we can get some reimbursement.
Yeah, I mean, I haven't talked to the county as far as what they have for, um, expenses, you know, in some of the roads in Green Island and whatnot, but, uh.
Yeah, it sounds like it's coming down to this region if we can reach the.
Threshold?
Threshold. We're really hoping, like, Green Island one should push us close with their levy blow.
Does that include the dike then, or the bolevia?
Yeah, so I think we're going to be darned close whether we can meet the female threshold, but we'll see, I guess, going forward here, so, um. I just, before I came in, was doing the math and we had thirteen thousand dollars worth of our staff time just to clean up. Um, so I'm hoping they'll allow that and some of the other things. Um, some roads did deal a little damage, but they're still usable. The creek bank got a little washing at Spruce Creek, um, concrete wall at Sebelah took a little beating from the wave action. Um, but most of it was just cleaning up silt and grass seed down and getting this campsite.
Big time, time and effort.
Yep, adding lime and rock to the parking lots and, and so.
All the boat docks.
Covered it, dude.
Back in Spruce.
Yep, the boat docks are back in the strus, all the boat docks, um, and I don't, we had cut some of the tie box expecting to have that wall replaced this spring by the time. Um, well, with that flood, it kind of makes some of that wall cave back in the springs, so that, that took a week to try to rebuild that section of wall to get those docks in. Um, so I see if we can get some funding through that, repay some of that, um. Uh, we haven't seen all of our, clearly I pay electricians and stuff, the, um, flood, we had to pull all the electrical out of every box before and then put it back in every box, so. Um, I guess better than replacing everything at the end.
Yeah, so he's just on hold, has agreed to all that, and just to wait till.
Yep.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, other than that, kind of the.
Where do we stand with that ramp?
We have seventy-some thousand dollars in grant money. It'll probably be a bid out this fall. Alex through Buchanan County is supposed to be getting me some plans and bid sheets so we can bid that out. We'll wait until the busy season's over. It is currently a broken ramp at Spruce. If you hear people claiming it's probably a little more difficult for them to load their boats when they have to go in and slant. Um, the river ramp's unusable, but it's always got sand.
So there's no, for say.
Parts to drop when you, when you back in, you feel like a, a drop down or whatever.
Yeah.
So there's, there's not, uh, to block that off and pump the water out, pour some concrete, just to level it? Is that more than what?
I think most likely they're going to pump it out, tear out the old section and put a new base.
Yeah, we're just looking for something temporary. I see others docking over on the east ramp there.
Yep, yeah, and that's one I favor. I always go and, a lot of people don't like the current one they're loading and unloading on that one, but, uh. The sand rolls in every other day. It seems like we, you, new, new load of sand off of it, so if you have a bigger boat, you're probably not pulling it out of that ramp very easy. So, so yeah, we have added rock quite a few times to that one in the harbor, trying to build it up, but it just get enough boats traffic and drop wash and stuff that moves that rock in and out.
Get an awful shower, it's.
Yeah.
It's really starting to get low again.
You know what I, three, five, five, something?
Four eight this morning.
It's safe. Pulled right in that four and a half.
I was looking at projections, I know they got quite a bit of rain up north.
Anybody's, I got the river level up there.
Yeah.
It's holding about four eight right now.
Yeah, I'm imagining they're having troubles getting boats in and out of South Sebelah Lake right now without hitting. I've heard, I haven't heard any complaints in our harbor yet from people regarding about them, but it wouldn't surprise me at this level, as slow as that harbor is. Um, if we're going to start here in some places, but I could really, really hope we don't have to deal with that, but not much we can do about it.
I can't control that.
What are your measures to take?
Just as much as you can put out, they're saying, you know, hey.
Yeah, my, I think as we, if we were.
You're kind of boarding it, you're, you know. You're kind of boding it, you know, boding at your own risk, but. Watch it for shallow.
Yeah. Should probably think about. The city does that at the Bellevue City Ramp, I know. Um, they have some issues, so. Um, that's about what's really going on. Field trip seasons in full swing with date camps and summer school. Um, there's been hundreds of kids a week going through the center. Um. With that stuff, so. Um. Environment, a lot of staff have been busy doing those things. So. We're kind of feel like I'm ready for fall to catch up on things that seem like.
Don't say it.
You're going.
I know, it's just you're going to, but yeah. Um, if you guys have anything else for me, that's kind of where we're at on some of this stuff and.
Appreciate the update, Nathan, and if there's anything that you need, let us know and we'll.
Yep.
Hopefully we got a new year coming and.
I know that meeting is getting pushed to the.
The tense, we'll talk tense. Um, I haven't talked to Josh since last month, so. Um, we're kind of haven't really done much yet on that. So hopefully. Get with Josh, with the city here, see where we're at. Um, I know he's paid the first bill finally. So we're in that timeframe. We're starting moving with some money, so.
Good.
But.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
You guys.
See you later.
Okay, right on time, Brianna. Good morning, Brianna Kirk, our VA, Jackson County VA Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You want to call Lori? Go ahead. For the. Lori Rowland. Thank you.
I might as well start off right away with just puffing you up a little bit.
Oh, boy.
I got one call from somebody I do not know.
Okay.
And they were from depression area and they couldn't say enough good things about it.
Well, that's good.
I'm just saying, they said they come in there, everything was in order, bang, 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 bang. Answered all the questions and had everything prepared and honestly, God, I couldn't I couldn't get her off the phone.
Well, that's great. I have to hear it.
So I just saying, we don't get them calls very often either. So I sure appreciate the job that you do and 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 I I get calls like that too.
Awesome. Well, good.
Shrink you back down.
Yeah. All right, um, so we have seen an increase in walk-ins for the month of June. Um, but even from the VA are still coming in super slow just because of the PAC Act. Um, I know they hired a bunch of new raiders, but I don't know if their training. Is finished or not, but we're just not really seeing decisions. Um, we currently have around ninety five open claims for Jackson County. Um. And the most recent numbers released are from April of this year. So we have three hundred eighty two Jackson County families receiving a total of six hundred fifty five thousand five hundred thirty one dollars in compensation pension and DIC benefits. And that's up uh five veterans and thirteen thousand three hundred thirty three dollars since March of this year. Excellent. Um, our office will be closed starting tomorrow. I will be on vacation. And I won't be back until July ten. So. We'll open at eight thirty on July ten. Um, so that.
Is there a secretary yet there to take? No, no?
Not yet. Um, she actually starts July tenth too.
Okay.
Yep, so her hours will be ten thirty until four thirty Monday through Friday. So, um, and Tony is gonna come back and help train her just so that I can do other office stuff.
Okay, so Tony's not available just to fit in the office for do we? I you let pretty much let all your clients know or find people know that.
Um, I'll put something out on Facebook and hang sign, but other than that.
Okay, well, at least we know it if we get a call.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so that means too that there will be no outreach at the Bellevue Legion the first Wednesday of July either.
Okay.
Just due to staffing. Um. Okay, um, Roger Schnorr's last day on the commission is June thirtieth. So I just want to thank him for his years of service to the veterans of Jackson County and our office.
And please pass our appreciation on to Roger.
I will do that. Absolutely. And that is all I have for you guys.
Thank you very much. That was short and sweet.
It was short and sweet.
Again, thanks for what you're doing over there and I'd like to hear from happy customers.
Yeah.
I don't know what you paid her, but you. You're good. You knew what you wanted to tell me.
Well, that's good. Glad to hear it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Merry good day.
Okay, where are we at here?
Lori says she's not quite ready. Can you do boards and commissions first?
Okay, we're doing commission reports. Um, I guess there's really nothing too much to report for the RPA. I mean, we were. We were all there and and of course they're working through their um. Software issues.
All right.
And they felt pretty good about where they were headed with that and. How it's coming along. They still have some issues too. It's fixed, I guess, but they talked to other agencies that are in the same position or worse than they are. So. Well. It's coming along.
They're a lot more happy than what they were.
Yeah.
Couple months ago.
Yeah, um, workforce, everything's kind of going kind of status quo right now. There's a few things, events going on. Um, right now we're just trying to dig me up. So getting all finishing, getting all the new elected people trying to spun up on. Um, their initial training and uh. Just. Kind of pulling some up here, probably only to report on that.
I haven't, I guess I haven't heard anything lately on the jail. Um, I expect them to come in, I guess, every other week, but.
Yeah, I I did stop by and talked to Jeremy today, um, as far as trying to gather those numbers for us. They're just waiting. They put out RPA, RFPs week week ago. And right now they're just waiting on those contractors, subcontractors to give them stuff. So. Um, they're they're trying to get their numbers together as fast as they can. Um. I asked them to kind of give us a timeline of what that might look like and where we stand. With the possibility of the expansion, um, where we're sitting. And they're working on it, but everything seems to be going good. It looks like they've just seen from the road. Um, they have the administrative area. It looks like it's being started out in section dog. So. Things seem to be going right now. They're kind of kind of the Masons aren't there yet. Um, they're finishing up a school. They were supposed to be there on the nineteenth, so. That's making it a little harder to pour the mazeneen and things like that, so. But I don't know if that'll give us a little extra time. To prep our numbery or whatever, so. Other than that, everything's going. They're working on what they can.
Yeah, they seem to be uh happy with the progress on the Together We Build building from what I heard, so.
Moving right on. I also toured the jail and yeah, they were. Doing a lot of rough. Rough work. There, so.
Okay. We will take.
Early childhood, basically.
Sorry.
Early childhood, basically, um, they're still looking for a new. Director for that position. They were. Kind of tossing around if they needed to get a new one, if things were gonna get revamped. But it looks like all of that got put on hold or postponed or whatever. So. They are out looking for somebody to. Run that and all of their childhood grant. Supplies are delivered out to the centers. For people that requested supplies or assistance through their programs.
Yeah, uh, I don't know if they have any other reports, but. Anyway.
Press.
We're joined by uh with Lori Rowland, our Jackson County zoning administrator and Lou Altich. His assistant. Good morning, ladies.
Hi, good morning. So. I know we start with the easy stuff and the hard stuff. So we'll start with leisure lake.
All right.
Uh. I did get to go out there last Friday. And. My printer doesn't do color, but um the right the far the far right column, oh, I didn't put. Grid lines on it either. I apologize. The far right column shows everything that's totally evaded. And uh. There are a few things that never. Got the notices served. I think we have one, two, three, four, five that we haven't been able to serve notices to. And I have diligently worked on those and. I'm not not getting not getting the action on them. It was um number zero nine. Zero sixteen. Zero nineteen. Zero twenty two and thirty four. Uh.
Did you say twenty two and thirty four?
Yes, sir. And the number thirty four, I was actually in contact with um. Mrs. Heron's son. Uh. And and their attorney. Uh, basically, there's nobody to serve at this point. The attorney was adamant that. You know, you. To serve the estate. They're they don't have everything cleared up yet. You know, to serve that to serve her for the estate really wasn't an option. So I don't know if that's the case or not. But um she says they're hoping to have some title stuff cleared up soon where they can sell it.
So if you don't get. Into the estate or file to the estate, well, it'll be gone. And then what do you do?
Then it would go to the new owner.
New owner?
Yeah. So and we're talking to the attorney, I did let her know that. The new owners would be required to either get the. Well, both there's two abandoned mobile homes.
So will that show up on the property? No. A nuisance violation won't show up on. On title opinion, I don't imagine.
It did fix.
A lot of those don't have.
Right.
Quickly means there's no way up straight.
Right.
And one's a BLL. A building on leased land. So uh basically. Yeah, it is. So basically, they she understands that. They wouldn't have to get rid of the BLL. They could keep it as long as they, you know, got it fixed, you know, the broken windows and. And uh. And two, if someone was fixing up and living in it, that would take care of the abandoned problem. Um, but the other ones, the other four above it that I mentioned, uh. Nine sixteen nineteen. Twenty two. Number nineteen will be served in the second round. That was um. That was an issue where the property was said to be transferring. And while we haven't seen a transfer come through yet. And. I don't know how we're gonna deal with these unreported contracts that go on out there all the time. Uh. It it doesn't, you know, that rent to own stuff just does not show up in public records. So I don't know if we have to. Maybe try to work something out with Leisure Lake Property Owners Association because they've allowed that type of activity. That way it shows that they're not a renter.
So have you been working with the association? Are are they aware of all this and and keeping abreast of it to say? Uh, they should be a part of this, you know, and say, if you do. Pass or allow these contracts, we should know about it.
Yeah, well, if they they should be required to record a contract, so they should.
Well, they don't have to record it, but they have much to stand for. They don't, but.
I know, and that's what makes it harder for us too is, okay.
But if this location knows it, then they should.
And I have talked to their secretary and she's been she's been helpful where she can. And in some cases, she's just as lost as we are. Um.
Well, what I see from this is there's been pretty good compliance.
Oh, my gosh, it's amazing. And then one of the places where uh well, the places where you guys have brand extensions, all but one. Uh. The progress has been incredible. And we talked about that burnout. It looks like they're taking that baby down. So there there is there is progress. There's still, you know. A lot to be done in some cases, but.
Well, progress is progress and that's what we wanted.
We started with a mountain and, you know, they're starting to knock off the top. So, yeah, we're seeing some good things. I know. When I was out there, I called group. I'm like, oh, my gosh, this is the awesome. Yeah, so we're seeing good things.
So but at some point, we need to start going, is this something we're gonna have to track from now on or does this go back on the association? I mean. Because it seems like there's a bit of mess in there making.
It is.
You know.
Most definitely.
Contracts, they have their statutes, I mean.
Well, there's some things that we've been taking note of that. That's one of them right there where we just talked about contracts and of course. Uh. Getting these molehills knocked down before they become the mountains that they are. And then the other is. We really have to talk about uh. Primary dwellings being camper trailers. Cause it's really, I can't see where it fits into our ordinance. And it is allowable. As far as the leisure lake bylaws or their rules and regulations, if they're connected to a sewer. And I'm just like. It shouldn't matter if it's connected to a shirt, that's to a store, it shouldn't be allowed. In our opinion, and I don't think it works in our current ordinance, I think they're in conflict. So. Really need to work with our attorney, their attorney, their association at some point. But at the same time, we have other messes. We probably want to make sure. Get them all cleaned up at one time if we can. Uh, I mean, or we can go go ahead on winter time. It's it's your call. I don't mind either way.
Yeah. There'll be a lot of.
I I I truly believe we're taking baby steps here and we're improving and we're gaining ground. So I think we just keep pushing forward here. And if we have to have a meeting with the association that said they didn't kind of move forward also.
Okay.
So they gotta put a little pressure. Um, we're we're they're they're there every day, you know, and they know they're their neighbors, friends and neighbors or whatever they are. Well, yeah, whatever it is. It that. That portion of Jackson County has changed dramatically in the last thirty years, so.
It's looking better.
With it, yeah.
Yeah, even the last six months. It's looking better.
Yeah.
Uh, so anyway, the real question here is on those that have not fully abated. And then have been served. When do we want to start the legal process on them? The ones that haven't asked for an extension. Do you want, do you want us to start serving those early July or should we do a courtesy? Uh. Another courtesy. Uh. Letter. I don't know how you guys want to proceed. Of course, it's gonna start costing us additional money.
How many is there?
Uh, let me see now that I cleaned it up. I think ten.
Okay, so I I would suggest maybe another courtesy letter and strong courtesy letter, maybe some tackles or quotations or highlighted or something and say. You know, we're we're not crying wolf here, so um.
I did get contacted by one family, family, uh, because they have multiple properties on this list. And they were asking how do we go? Because it's just basically bad. Um, a lot of the kids move out of the area. And I said that you need to provide a plan. And show us. How you, you know, maybe if you start up one property, but then give us a timeline, how you can progress. Um, and he said he's working on that.
Okay, I did get, we do have contact from. Am I allowed to use first names or anything?
You're 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 on your own.
Okay, so number number twenty six.
Yeah.
Okay, so. She and the number twenty five, she contacted on their behalf for the two properties. Uh. Those two properties, zero eight and zero nine, are, you know, part of the address. So those were granted extensions. The end of the month.
Yeah, have we seen improvement?
Yes, those are. There is a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts, especially on the one closest to the lake. Basically, they're tearing it. Down piece by piece.
Right.
Yeah, but and then there's a garage across the street, which. The stuff in front of that, it rotates. So there's stuff that disappears. There's stuff that comes in. There's so it's there's a lot of moving parts on that one. Uh, but yeah, so the same stuff that we had pictures of probably in March isn't the same stuff that's currently here, but it's not as much.
So.
And that's what we asked again in front of it.
But the prop, so with his name on number twenty seven, he has other property. And um I we haven't been contacted on uh. Oh, hang on here a second. I got something on my note here. Okay, so that one was cleaned up on number thirty one. So that one was done. But I think we have some. They probably have other property too, don't they?
It appears that they do, yes.
Yeah. So I'm just looking for the, okay, down at the very bottom too. Yeah. At number forty two. Yeah, and number ten. So, yeah, so. Is he gonna be providing something or do I need to?
That's what I told him, but you know, you might need to out or you know, just ask. You know, but I told him he needs a plan. That he's gonna kind of follow and go, because he's like, I'm working on this. I'm doing it. It's like, great.
And he has some.
We need to have to have something. We need to see continue.
So he has a plan. So he has a plan of where he's gonna go next, and we can follow that and say, well, there is a, there's not a.
Right, there's some of that hits that were very. Busy, that means a lot of um, a lot, so. But I, do you have a phone number for him that you could share with me?
No.
Okay, I'll try to reach out to the female sibling part. And uh, see if I can make contact with her and get a phone number. For him. So do a strong courtesy letter.
I I that's a suggestion.
Uh, okay, so the strong courtesy letter, should I try it regular mail?
Guys okay with that?
Um, for every notice that we have to serve, I believe we're like eighty dollars for court costs. And then we have an additional thirty to forty dollars for.
It ain't the serve I'm worried, it's all cleanup I'm worried.
Well, I know, but we're we're looking at some big money here though.
I hear you.
Uh, and then we'd have the service fees on top of it, so we'd probably be. Hundred and twenty some dollars per. Per case, so we're over a thousand dollars just. You know, so if we can do it something more gentle. You know, and just that.
So we'll just try it, yeah, I mean, the thing is, I mean, we said going into this, if we're going to, we're not gonna uh. Try Wolfman.
We're not.
Lose our backbone.
We're not, right.
We can do hard, I would say, yeah, it needs to be a very strong courtesy letter and. I would do regular mail.
Regular mail, okay, and see what we get.
Right, after that, it ain't gonna be a nice courtesy letter anymore.
Okay.
Uh, did I see something going out for the property in Green Island? Uh, you had sent us something, but.
We we have, see, what did I send you guys? Uh, I think it was more just the request.
Okay.
About going forward, and that one was where. I really wanted to, if you guys will let me, the courtesy on it, or. They they made some progress without a doubt. But one of the things, maybe I worded something that could have been misinterpreted about the abandoned vehicles on the street. Well, they moved abandoned vehicles off the street, they put them in the backyard. And so maybe I needed to be a little more direct. Remove period, don't just get them off the street, so there might have been some room for misinterpretation. So I'd like to see if we could.
When I looked at that address, I I don't know that you got the address correct, um, I couldn't find the one that you had, but there is one pretty close to that. Number.
The number on number one, or or the, it's on the top of the list.
I'm talking in the.
Yeah.
It's on the top of that list.
So I maybe transpose something in the email.
Yeah, I I think it's uh, the last two are eight-four.
Okay, all right, I might have typed something wrong there, I apologize.
Uh, the four nine, yeah, eight-one, I cannot find, so.
Okay.
I think it's eight-four.
Okay, I'll look at that. But yeah, I, just in case, and and we're learning from this, you guys, we really are, just uh.
Well, we don't wanna be bad guys, but we just, you know, I mean, it's it's issues that we need to address, and that's all we're doing, so.
Right, and I have um, and seriously, Green Island's one of those areas I'd like to. Take similar type action on that we're doing in Leisure Lake after. We get all, you know, get this ninety percent in in check. So um, but anyway, so I will go for a refresh registered for assuming regular mail on that. And then. What was next on the agenda, just uh.
All right, yeah, we got the G O committee and we have. I guess all the information that we need to have. We've uh, I did have a chance, I don't know if Lisa had a chance or not, but. Actually Buck actually called me and they're willing to participate as a as a uh entity. And I guess as far as. G I S goes in with two, it doesn't matter, really make any difference, it's coming out of the same general. So um, I asked Buck for him to discuss it with his staff as far as how they were gonna participate.
Did you have?
You were talking about the participation or the payment of?
The participation. Oh, the payment, yeah.
Okay, well, the the payment, um, because if you pass it today. It'll come out of fiscal year twenty-three's budget.
Yeah.
What we decided to do, just to get it up and running, we took ten thousand dollars from the I T budget. We took ten thousand dollars from Shelley's data processing department, and we took the remainder money. From Lori's budget, so two general fund, one rural fund, that'll get it up and running for F Y twenty-three. Um, and then because it's not budgeted for F Y twenty-four, we'll make a determination later how. Or who and how we'll get it paid and next this.
If we decide.
Yeah. So, I mean, if you don't decide, then then. This is an easy decision, but.
I've talked to several different departments and they all think it's it's a positive thing going forward, I mean, to keep up with the times, if you will. Um. I know it's a different age than it was fifteen years ago, but uh. I've heard good things and everybody's got a positive attitude about it, so that's.
And that's, that's true, I mean, more and more, you do more things electronically than you do paper.
I I it's gonna help contractors tremendously, I think, if they can get something. I mean, some of our contractors are fully capable, but some are not, you know, and you can't win for that, that's just.
Then they still have the option of coming in here and. With some assistance, they can still do it electronically.
If we approve it today. We pay the thirty-five twenty-eight and the twenty-one ninety-nine forty-eight. And that will come out of fiscal year twenty-three.
So the total, the total that we will need to pay is the twenty-three thousand six hundred and forty-seven dollars. And. I have it set up as.
But if we pay for that today. Or this fiscal year. Fiscal year twenty-four, we really wouldn't have to pay one because. It would need to be in twenty-fourth budget, because we would be approving, we would have paid twenty-four today.
So today you're paying from August first twenty twenty-three through June thirty is twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, but it comes out of fiscal year twenty-three budget.
Correct.
So we, it wouldn't. It doesn't affect the twenty-four budget, we would just have the budget for twenty-five.
That decision then would have to be made if you take it out of one budget or ten budgets, so for today to get it paid. That's how.
Okay, so let's uh, is there any more discussion on the permitting project Excel?
I think it's something that there's a lot of potential there, and I think there's a lot more unrealized potential as people get used to it and see what it can do. A lot more ideas kinda getting started, so.
Is that your motion?
Yep, I make a motion, we do it.
I'll agree with that. It was talked about from a couple of people that I talked to though, that we need to really look at what our permitting fees are. If we need to be adjusting anything there, not just because of this, but because they haven't been. Changed in a while from what I've been told.
May I add to that, um, with us working on the comprehensive plan, I can see that in a year from now, we could potentially be looking at. A a greater rewrite of our ordinances, which. I don't know if you'd wanna wait that long to make those, you know, fee changes, but they could be more comprehensive and. A lot more things addressed.
Well, we could take a look at it, see our where we're compared to others, I guess, to and see where we're at, that's certainly we need to keep up with annually probably.
Oh, okay.
So was was there a second in there, did I hear? Have a motion a second to approve the new permitting software, is that what we're calling it?
Service agreement.
Service agreement?
Okay, that works.
As presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose nay. Motion carried.
With that being said, then I need a motion to approve and authorize the auditors office to issue a warrant and the publication of the claim listing. In the amount of twenty-three thousand six hundred and forty-seven dollars.
Now, the second to approve the authorization and the auditors office to issue warrant as presented, all those in favor say aye. I oppose nay. Motion carried.
And just for clarification on this money we're using to spend, this is coming out of budget and. Budgeted money in twenty-three that is going to unspent at the end of fiscal year.
Right.
Right, so some people know.
That will be spent.
Right.
Okay.
That is for us, okay, just let us know when we need to come back for that other.
Well, that's all we have left.
Oh, wow.
We're good.
So let's take a short recess at this time. At this time, we will reconvene.
So uh, we have a presentation from Next Air Energy, which is a wind. Energy development company that corporation that's been doing a wind study. Uh, they call it the Clinton Wind Study, which is Clinton County. The bulk of it is, and then there's a narrow strip in Jackson County that's. Um, been part of a wind study now for about a year. So we have Kimberly Dickey here with us from Next Air Energy. And would you introduce Neil and Ryan for us, Tim?
I certainly would.
Okay.
You, you wanna come up or?
I would love to.
That'd be great.
I presume we can tell you.
No, yeah, you come right on.
You guys just want me back here then?
Uh, well, you could pull a chair up here somewhere if you like.
Um, I think the last time I didn't have business cards, but I brought them today. There's one for you. Mr.
Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you again as well, and one for you, sir.
Thank you. Um, so Neil, will you grab one other one?
There you go, perfect. All right, well, good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Kimberly Dickey, I'm a project director for Nextera Energy Resources. Um, here in Iowa, um, what I uh do for Next Era is help to develop. Our late-stage project pipeline. Um, and I'll explain what that means, the difference, difference between early stage and late stage, but. Our project pipeline consisting of both utility-scale solar, wind, and battery energy storage projects. Here in Iowa, maybe in the future also hydrogen. Um, with me today, I have Ryan Keller, who is with our public affairs firm.
Ryan.
He follows me everywhere I go, and sometimes Neil, who is one of our third-party land agents. He is not a land agent working on this project yet. It's um, it's potential that he may work on this project, which is commonly known as Clinton County Wind. So I just wanted to bring him with me today, so he had an opportunity to. The countryside um, over here in eastern eastern Iowa, he's um, been working on some solar projects around the Lindy House area. So that's the team that's with me today. And unfortunately, Oleg is not here today, uh, he had an orthodontic surgery and I said. You know, take care of you and I'll take care of this and we'll tag team it, he is also taking on some projects, just so you know. Um, in Kansas. And so there may be a time at which he is no longer coming to work on this project, and I'll just continue to lead it, so just giving you a heads up on that. Um. The opportunity today to come and give you guys an update on the project, um, I really appreciate that. Uh, some, some interesting developments have happened since uh, the last time we spoke and we had an opportunity to meet in Lori's office. Um, what? This time of year is uh, been an opportunity after landowners have finished planting their fields. To resume conversations uh, with landowners who are interested, are still interested in participating in the project. Um, and have more questions, always, always, always during planting and harvest season. We we experience kind of a.
They don't talk.
Yeah, they're busy, then they have priorities and we get that. Um, so actually, just driving over here this morning, I I did speak to our two active, active land agents on this project and. Um, and they did say that that things are starting to pick up the last couple of weeks, so um, so that's, that's good. Uh, the winter time, um, that that transition from winter, spring and summer. Um, we plan uh, for, you know, what can we actually accomplish, uh, once the weather is nice? What kind of studies um, that contribute to the overall diligence of the project? Within the study area of which Jackson County does fall within our study area, and what can we accomplish this year? Um, so in, so today, when I'm bringing you is an update on our study area. And the studies that we're looking to accomplish this year, and also an update on on the array and how the conversations with landowners are going. Um, so the study area, as I mentioned, does include a portion of Jackson County. Um, the majority of the study area is in Clinton County. Um, our array, which was recently remodeled, re modeled. Um, last fall, um, currently does not propose, the model. Does not propose any turbines in Jackson County, so I just wanted to make sure that you guys are aware of that, um.
And by array, what do you, what is? Is it just like the project scope or?
We have the study area, right, and then inside the study area. Our team that's called Next Era Analytics will um, design through computer modeling. Um, a project array, and that's where our land agents will. Also go towards having conversations with landowners, the. Process of modeling an array includes both. Known desktop analyses. Um, where the wind resource is, where we've already logged landowner interest. Where we know that we have land that is not constrained by biological resources. Um, flood plain, drainage districts, all the stuff that can be. First sourced through public information, G I S data, and then when we come into the field. With survey crews, it's all validated on the ground, boots on the ground. So when I say we do, we conduct surveys during. The seasons that are nice and allow folks to be outside. Um, so our, our current model right now is not proposing any turbines in Jackson County. Um, which means that um, our survey is focused on where those areas are in Clinton County. Um, the surveys that are going on right now in Clinton County include avian use surveys. And acoustic surveys, so predominantly wildlife and biological. Um, there are a lot of host of other studies that need to be done, but are only conducive once we have. A stronger idea of all of the landowners that are interested in participating. So I'll back up and explain that the overall project that we're proposing is a two hundred and fifty megawatt project, nothing has changed there. That would consist of depending on the technology of the wind turbines that are selected somewhere between eighty and ninety turbines. Um, plus. Permanent met towers, but we have up right now are two temporary met towers, one of which is in Jackson County. Temporary met towers, once they establish data to um, to establish the wind resource. Those will come down before we do any permanent construction. Um, so as our land agents continue to talk to landowners this summer and fall. Before planting season, and um, the avian surveys that I mentioned. And that acoustic surveys that are gonna be ongoing, um, will. Be ongoing uh, for approximately two years while we continue with all of our diligence. Um, talking to landowners and working through um. All of the steps for its development, so with that, um, I will pause and see if you have any questions for me.
So. The met tower one is in Jackson County, are you trying to get a reading or somewhere in Jackson County then, or is it more? Allocated because it's so close to the border, is that? The placement of it was.
Yes, so the original modeled array. Had turbines um, where the strongest wind resources. Within the study area, the strongest resource at the original onset of. Um, establishing the project boundary was um. Shall we just say toward the eastern end of the project study area? And then we conducted. Habitable structure surveys, as well as active eagle, eagle and migratory bird surveys. And those two studies are critical to do at the onset. Habitable structure surveys tell us. Where are people living? And where would it be possible to safely build wind turbines? That portion of the project study area is very densely populated. And it really just did not make sense to have that significant portion of the project. In that, within the study area, we needed to shift to more. in that within the study area, we needed to shift to more open spaces where we can safely site turbines. Also, the results of our initial active eagles nest survey indicated there are a lot of eagles nests that are active along the river. Um, right, yeah. So, so with that, that, that automatically establishes buffers on that are dictated by federal agencies. So um, so those two things caused the array to shift. And that is why the met tower that is in Jackson County was originally proposed and discussions with that landowner happened, and that's why that met tower is there. But because it is right up, you know, on the border in Sevula, um, and because it's up, we may as well take advantage of the data. Um, it's a good um, litmus test, if you will, of the overall public available data that we analyze to begin with, and having real meteorological data and resource, you know, from the ground up, if you will, um, literally is, is a, is a good validator. Um, plus it's up, it is now permitted. Um, they're quite expensive to take down, so we may as well, again, take advantage of the data. That data is, you know, data that we're happy to share with your, with your GIS.
Just out of curiosity, um, let's say you decide to go forward with the project and the template that tower comes down, you erect permanent ones. Is that recommitting process or is that um, because you're going for temporary or permanent or?
So the permanent met towers are always um, structures that are proposed when an applicant were to come before um, a county zoning um, commission and board of supervisors for a zoning approval permit. Um, so we would take down, in, in the situation where we're applying for a zoning permit, we would um, get kind of a zoning permit that approves the land use for the wind farm, the turbines and um, the towers usually also require not just a land use permit, but also FAA determinations of no hazard, and they also require structural permits or building permits during your building division. So um, it's, it's a lot of permits, but um, but it's a process and all of our projects were committed to that process.
Any questions, Lori?
No, uh, and she's right, um, so old tower comes down, the new tower wouldn't necessarily be in the same location, but even if it was, it would require different permit, which you are in, and um, going through the board of adjustment or whatever other, I mean, proceedings we have in our, in place at that time.
Okay.
No, um, as you, I don't know if you guys are aware, I'm sure you are, that we just hit moratorium against the wind. Just, and it isn't because, it was my idea, I'm not opposed to it by any means, I just want to make sure we have our ducks in a row before things. Sometimes the cart can get before the horse and we want to have an ordinance in place that affects, protects citizens of Jackson County, but also your interest in, if that makes sense. And reading some of these ordinances that Lori provided, um, it, you know, it's a little different when you guys say that right now, there's no turbines can be placed in Jackson County, but with the met towers, um, how do you guys, are you gonna, for lighting, are you gonna, are, will yours have the, the red flashing lights? Or will it have the, the ADLS system that some people, I, you know, like again, if they're not coming to Jackson County, some of this is really.
More informational.
Right. I'm just learning a lot of new words, you know, shadow flicker, DI, eye shedding, all the sounds like what?
Like drinking from a fire hose.
Exactly.
Um, so we'll just start with the basics. Um, when it comes down to wind, wind turbine marking and lighting, it is, um, it's always dictated by the FAA. So you go through a process where um, you apply for a FAA determination of no hazard, we call them GNHs. Um, and in that determination of no hazard, once the FAA conducts their multi-agency review, seven-page-long permit, sometimes a few extra pages, but uh, it will tell you exactly what the lighting requirement is for each structure and what the marking requirements are in terms of the paint and color of the, the turbine itself, the lighting specifically. Um, I know this isn't, uh, you're, you're not the only, you know, jurisdiction, obviously, that would like to see the as reduced number of red flashing lights as possible, and we also hope that for that as well. However, we don't have the final say in that, it is the FAA. Um, and through their, um, their diligence, what they're looking at is proximity to proposed structural locations within the wind farm, within proximity of active airports, airfields, um, whether they're farm, exactly, whether they're farm fields, um, with, you know, with air strips, um, if they're active, they're considered. And also military training routes. So, so it's an extensive process and it can take up to a year or longer sometimes to get those, those permits. Um, but in each permit, it will tell you if, um, if you can, you know, what the lighting and marking regime needs to be based on airspace activity. Um, we can request that they evaluate ADLS, um, which is uh, aircraft detection lighting system, ADLS. And what it does is utilizes um, a radar detection when um, aircraft are within proximity of the structure, it will trigger the lights to come on. Um, and then they'll stay on long after, you know, minutes after the aircraft has departed the, you know, proximity of the structure, but that's also a requirement for safety purposes, so, but beyond that, then, you know, the amount of time um, is, is reduced, the light still will come on, you know, for various other reasons, um, as dictated by the FAA, but it does curtail the amount of um, like pollution, shall we say, in, um, in the overall airspace. If, if the FAA will allow it, then, you know, we can look at including it, so, but we have to make the request that they evaluate it.
Now, in the ordinances, there was, some of them talked about EMS communication interruption. Is that a specific like frequency or is it digital or analog? So right now, we're in the process switching over to a new, a new system, is there a system that this affects more or less or?
We just, what we typically do is just a thorough, we have a third-party conduct that, that survey essentially based on the final proposed locations um, of a developed wind farm that maybe, that hasn't been permitted yet. Um, and we look at the results or they evaluate and provide us guidance and results on whether there needs to be some shifts or whether, um, you know, some turbines just can't move forward, in, in which case maybe an alternate isn't, um, you know, within proximity or causing any disturbance. So then we'll not permit one, one structure and lean on a, a alternate turbine that's within the proposed array. So, um, and that's a report that we include with our applications.
Okay.
May I?
Yes.
So right now, there's, you guys are not looking at any acquiring land or any property owners for turbines in Jackson County? Currently, right now, um, we are not, but um, as I have said to you before and will say to you guys, if something changes, I will let you guys know when our land agents begin to have more conversations with uh, with landowners in Jackson County. There were early conversations, obviously. That's how the met tower got signed and, and there were some landowners that were interested in, in turbines as well. Um, but because we had to make the grand shift, um, away from proximity to the river, active eagles nests and, you know, dense population, um, the new array is, is all proposed right now in Clinton County. But landowner participation may dictate that we make another shift, and when that happens, I will come here and let you guys know.
I guess we sure appreciate the updates as far as that goes, and I suspect that you, this is not your first rodeo either, so you would give us time and um, an effort to say that, well, we'll let, we'll keep you posted or keep you informed.
Yes, absolutely.
I mean, we certainly want to maybe get an ordinance in place, and we talked about it, we looked at it, but again, but there is nothing proposed for Jackson County where.
I think it's going to be smart.
Right.
Right, definitely. Yes, I, I think you're on the right path.
And we have, I mean, we have other counties that we've talked to that, that there is a lot of turbines and whatnot.
Yes, um, and also I would just love to extend um, any opportunity if you're interested. I'm happy to meet with each of you one-on-one, um, we have a really great uh, wind, wind farm development presentation that walks you through all that decision-making, um, the studies and what you learn from each study and how it results in the type of reports that become requirements and ordinances. I'm happy to walk you through a presentation like that. I think, uh, when I first came in this morning, you mentioned something about the, um, there is a presentation uh, tomorrow in Buchanan County, um, Conservative Energy Forum, I think is.
Lead Energy, I think it was called it, uh, yeah.
Yep.
Wednesday evening in, in Bellevue.
Yes, so you know, if that's something that you guys end up going to, I'd be interested in hearing um, your thoughts and feedback on that. Um, I'm going to try to go, just because I want to hear what they have to say. But I'm offering uh, anytime, uh, if you're interested in, in just kind of a one-on-one, happy to, to provide that to you. Also, we have over, we have thirteen operating wind farms in Iowa. So anytime you're interested in um, coming and seeing one in operation.
So they're scattered, I would guess, all over the Iowa, is that what you're?
Our closest one to here would be Sarah Gordo that's operating. And we have wind farms in Sarah Gordo County, Goldsboro County, Hancock County, Story County, Audivon, uh, it's a portion in, in Guthrie. So, yeah, I mean, if something would work out, I'd be happy to let the guys know at the wind farm that they could have some visitors and they can give you guys a tour. Um, we also have a training facility, uh, just outside in Colt County, where we train wind technicians after they've come out of, say, a program like at Kirkwood Community College and we are hired for, to work at Nextera, um, we bring them to our training facility in, in Colt County and take them through additional training before they are assigned their wind farm.
So outside of Colt County or in Colt County, I mean, in Des Moines or in?
Yeah, it's, it's, I couldn't tell you the pinpoint that's in Colt County. Um, and then we also have a generation repair facility, which is a pretty, pretty neat place to, to visit too. So just offering up, you know, some learning opportunities as you guys go through your process and.
Actually traveled west here last week, and you know, I was telling these guys earlier that, you know, we're great from, basically, if you talk to Maringo out to Victor or something like that west, uh, there's a tremendous amount of turbines up there, you know, and I think part of that's in Potawatomi, and I think part of it's in Iowa.
I decided to go to school in Emmitsburg. Emmitsburg, on the trip, I'm just going from Iowa to Emmitsburg.
Thirty-five and four.
Um, is just crazy amount of turbine usage though, so.
Iowa generates over sixty percent of its electricity from wind turbines, so. It's, it's new here in eastern Iowa.
But what about when you see these pictures of the blades and it's on fire and it's laying over and the oil's all over the place, what about that? Is that anything to that? Or is that, that's just somebody putting a cartoon out there. I suppose some, you have incidents, I suppose, or?
Mechanical systems, um, sometimes have leaks or breakdown and require repairs. Um, that's, you know, like anything with a car or.
Right.
I've been on an airplane, two engines, one caught on fire and you had to turn around and go land. I mean, sometimes, you know, mechanical systems fail, but the nice thing is that engineers have designed for that failure. And when something like that happens that you mentioned, um, what we first looked to see is it, did it fail the way it's designed to fail? And did anybody get hurt? No, good. So.
Are they, are they constantly changing, you know, the size and length of these blades too, is that correct? Or are they pretty much standard now as far as the length and such? I know there were some measurements of the twelve-hundred feet, you know, from.
Going as far as.
The majority of hub heights have stayed predominantly hub height being the generator on top, like the bus. Um, majority of hub heights is saying pretty consistently the same it is, as you suggested, the blades that are getting more aerodynamic, um, the, the composite material is more technologically, um, from an industry standpoint, changing, they're getting longer, more aerodynamic, but the material is also changing so that they can be recyclable, so we can do the full life cycle, um, you know, sustainability approach to this type of technology where after a certain number of years, you may want to replace those blades or replace, replace the generator, um, doing so in a way that keeps those materials out of landfill. Equipment can be repurposed, recycled or reused, um, is the way the industry is going. Um, but when the blades get longer, the tip heights get taller. So you're absolutely right.
Yeah, I mean, you read stuff about that, but yeah, it was a lot of changes in the last, I would say, five, six years probably on blades. But uh, there's a recycling plant type in Maringo or some kind too, isn't there, for them blades?
I am not as familiar with their facility. I really am focusing on, excited to get a tour here pretty, um, pretty soon of the blade recycling facility that's proposed just outside of Cedar Rapids near Fairfax.
Okay.
Um, in fact, I'm working to schedule a tour for another county supervisor. Um, I'll be happy to let you guys know if that tour materializes, uh, you might be interested. Um, but yeah, that's what they're designed to do, is just take in turbine blades and repurpose them into, um, materials that could be used for, um, inclusions for concrete. Road surfacing.
Reinforcement.
This, that's why this, this one county supervisor really wants to come, and is going to bring in a secondary roads engineer, um, to see if that can be some cost savings, um, for them as they plan their fiscal road improvements and budgeting, um. But also, it's just, it's, I'm excited for Iowa, right, because we, we have so many wind farms in Iowa and we have thirteen operating assets and we, we know everybody who owns and operates wind assets in Iowa knows that at some point, you know, we're going to have turbine blades that it's great to have, you know, a facility right here in Iowa, central Iowa, that, um, will be designed to, to take that and prevent all of that from going to land.
Yeah, that's a positive for sure.
Definitely.
Well, we sure appreciate it. Uh, anything else you'd like to share or anyone else, Ryan or Neil? Appreciate all the info and, and keep us updated as we go and.
Absolutely.
Sure appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Nice to meet you again, Kimberly. All right, is there anything else before the board this morning? I think we, did we get through all of our discussions? Have a motion and second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign?